All right, welcome to the September HR Business Services Committee meeting. We will get started at 4:33 today. So the first thing, we have no guest presentations for this meeting, and we'll move on right away to our departmental reports. And we're going to start out with Human Resources and Director Severance.
So you'll see on the Human Resources report summary, again, you'll see time of the year, lots of hiring for both certified and non-certified. We did a new hire orientation at the end of August. We had over 70 new employees attend that, which is great. We are doing another one on the 19th of September to catch anybody that maybe got hired kind of in that span that wasn't able to attend that. And then we also had a refer table at U of D Industries event. Many people dropping by, talking about subs as well as paraprofessionals positions. So we're hopeful that we will get a few contacts from there. Teachers on call seems to be going well. I do have a little bit of updated report based on the numbers that I provided in the report. I did receive an official report from Teachers on Call. And actually, our numbers last week were probably more like 60-some percent up to 100%. So we had three days last week where we had 100% fill rate for our teachers. Our paras were still struggling a little bit for the fill rate. So that does bring the average down, and that's where you'll see the lower 63 numbers. But last year, our rates were well below 50% fill rate.
Cool, teachers and paras.
Yeah. So I can send you that report. It's actually very interesting. It gives some comparisons to last year as well as the pair. And it also has some rates, which we don't go into later, but it has some rates for our surrounding communities and what they're paying for their sub, their para subs, which might be one of the reasons that we don't have as great of a fill for that. This was as of last week, and I don't have any updated data as far as the number of subs that we have online. But we did have, as of last week, 60 that are completely set and ready to go, additional 24 that are completing the final steps of our initial that we started with that were considered active in our system. We have hired 18 of those as regular employees. So they, of course, will come off the list. And there are a few that have taken other jobs or no longer interested in subbing. And then we do have that kind of chunk of 40-ish that we are still trying to reach out to, get them through the process, get them to apply. So there's still, you know, work to be done there. And I know our on-call person, Melanie, that's on staff here, has been working diligently to talk to them. And if they can actually come into our site and go through the application process right with her if they have trouble going through the online process. We've had a few changes in staffing. I think last time I reported that we were interviewing for our benefits coordinator, Amber Petrusa, who was our front desk person, has been promoted to that position. And this week, this weekend, last week, we welcomed two new staff, Sophia, who is our front desk person now, and then Miranda Fox, who is our additional HR I S P O, Specialist Support. Really great to have this full staff and such a great group of people. I think it's going to really push us forward into process improvement and getting a lot of systems updates. Benefits, of course, is busy with new school year people processing developments and a lot of new hires. So, of course, that generates a lot of new benefits work. And then we are looking at implementing a 529 savings plan as well as Roth. So they've been meeting with those plan sponsors just to see how we can get them in line here for our employees to have additional benefit option for them. We talked a few times ago about having the column that we now have 41% enrollment in that app, which is really, doesn't seem like a high number. But when we think about other services that we provide, like EAP, the utilization of EAP is typically under 10%. And I think here, we're under 5%. So to see a 41% enrollment on this app is really great. We are going to have another challenge coming up in October. So there will be some communications going on about that, but it's a mindful minutes using, actually using the app. So not just having it, but using it. Hiring updates. I do have some updated numbers that didn't make this report. So for our certified positions, we have offered, we have posted 248 for this school year. We have offered 203. And for the paraprofessionals, we have posted 131 and offered 94.
Director Severance, so those, it says through 8/5. I'm assuming that's nine and change or something?
Right, so that was the numbers that we had from last month, and they weren't updated prior to the report. So the numbers that I gave you are actually as of today.
Okay.
So then you'll see our current openings as of last week. Those, of course, have changed because Friday is typically our rotation of jobs. But a lot of the paraprofessionals are the same just because we haven't had a lot of applications, especially for the licensed language interpreter in some of those specialized positions. But we are getting really close to being full staffed on our teachers. And most of that, at this point, is just movement that happened toward the end of, the beginning of the school year, still positions that are internally moving. So that'll, we'll probably always have a few just because of that. You can see we have a fair amount of things in child nutrition, cafeteria monitor, which is not unusual, as well as paraprofessionals. We do have some new recruitment materials that will be, some yard signs that, if you'd like one, I've got them in my trunk, that we're going to be putting out at the school sites just to kind of let people know that we still have available openings and for the type of positions. So I think that's one thing for a person who wasn't in a school system before, a lot of these positions, I didn't even know what they were. So we're calling them out to say paraprofessionals, and we're hiring maintenance workers so that they realize it's not just teachers that we're hiring for, that there's plenty of other staff. Not much update in contract negotiations other than the National Conference of Firemen and Oilers has picked a date for their vote, which is September 24th. So hopefully, we'll have an update on that next month.
With the food service workers, we're going to be talking about this much later, but we are looking at updating and improving our hourly pay rates.
The hourly pay rates, yep.
And then just another quick question. Do you ever reach out to PTAs, the different schools to think about for like some of the nutrition playground monitors?
We haven't done it in HR. I believe the principals have some communication with that, but I'm not sure what that looks like in every school.
Yeah, okay.
And I'll add, we have three meetings with the parent associations and parent sites. And we all turn mine in. We have a lot of opportunities for our jobs. So we have one next, as a matter of fact, coming up this week.
Right.
And we'll make sure we announce a lot of openings in parents. We would apply for them to communicate to parents as well.
I would just like to say that I'm very appreciative of the Human Resources team and we, Director Severance, for the, I mean, to be at that point where we're only looking for six teachers at this point is really, really good, especially considering where we were last year. I really appreciate the team's dedication and also system improvement.
Questions? Come on, Alana. No, I'm just kidding.
All right.
All right, moving on. We'll move on next to the business services portion. Do we have a finance department purple report? Are we good this month?
We're good this month. I'm just working on the, we're still working with the auditors. They'll be onsite next week, so we're very demented to audit.
And how long do the auditors use? That audit usually, we look at that, is that December?
So November 30th is the date that everything has to be MDE. And then they'll spend December putting the audit together, and then we will present to you.
Yes, okay, perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then our enrollment reports, they will resume after October. Says we're only a weekend, we have to give ourselves some time for that. So look forward to that in October. Next, we have our child nutrition report. And of note for this nutrition report is the number of meals that we serve for both breakfast and lunch, which, when I added them up, if my math is correct, it was about 33,000 meals, which is incredible and wonderful. Looking at application for educational benefits that have to do with free and reduced lunch. We see, we have about seven paper applications and about 335 online applications. Our current students that are currently enrolled in free and reduced lunch, that will expire on the 18th of October. So we then go down and look what students qualify through the application and direct certification from the state of Minnesota. Free lunch is about 2,600 students, reduced is about 540. And these paid is 163. They applied, but they did not qualify. Let's see, as usual, they're looking to hire 26 employees, including hourly dishwashers. And this, hopefully, those numbers will go down because we hopefully will approve an increase in wage for our child nutrition workers from about 10 and 1/2 to about 13 and 1/2. Yeah. So are there any questions on child nutrition? The number of meals is really pretty impressive. Great, moving on. Facilities management and capital project status report.
Sure, I'd be glad to go over that. We completed 228 work orders in August. Currently got 290 open work orders. The Denfeld Tower is really progressing well. We're on the fourth and last side. It may get done this year with the spire put on, or the spire may wait until next spring. It depends on how the weather holds out. But that's really coming along good. Cotton Park Window Project, we're working with Kathy and working evenings and weekends to get that finished. It's just taking a long time. Materials are delayed, but project is coming good. We're under budget, and it's turning out real nice. The new Denfeld Sped Bathroom is almost done. Yet, we had hoped to have it done before school started, but we don't. And that was strangely enough related to lack of labor. Carl Sanderson could not get tile centers. So the labor part of it kept us from being completed. PSS track lane, one issue is still would be attorneys, and that I hope to have resolution by next month or the month after. And that has really, really been a long time that we've been working on this. Hope to have conclusion soon. As far as construction tasks on the hill, the existing facilities building is very close to complete. We're going to be doing a bunch list on that in the next couple of weeks. A good amount of work has been done on the transportation building now. The precast and steel are going up from the transportation building, and it is up in the DSC, and they're actually working on branding interior walls right now. Abatement is ahead of schedule in Central High School, and I'm thinking we're four to six weeks out before that one can start. Under building operations, the staff have just performed an excellent job this summer with the cleaning effort, and the buildings are looking good. We do have kind of a large amount of vacancies. We've got 22 vacancies in the facilities department. I really have to give a round of applause to the operation staff. They've really worked hard and did a great job to get the buildings cleaned up and ready for school to start. Everybody just really did a great job. Another interesting fact, in the month of August, we had 263 FTE days of people old, sick, or ill on top of the 22 vacancies. So it was really a monumental task to get buildings ready, but they're ready and they're maintained and they're safe and clean. And we're doing, doing well under health and safety, just general topics, tasks that were completed. Neutralization, chemical things were cleaned out. The whole high schools, fire marshal inspection at Garfield, those items have been completed. Allison Struck training was held. First safety committee meeting of the year that was conducted. Blood mark out the gents is updated. Employee right-to-know virtual training was created. A radio repeater installed at the hall. You know, Fortini's Little School repeater was put on emergency power so that it will work if we lose power. And workers comp is self-explanatory, but interesting fact, I cannot recall a month in which we've had all zeros for the report of incidents or recordable or days away from work. It is a pretty scripted work, so kind of interesting there. So it was a good month.
It's a great month.
I'll open to questions if anybody might have them.
Great, thank you, Mr. Severance. Appreciate it. Now we have Bart for our technology report.
Thank you. Yes, I'll start off with the cybersecurity for our Google Gmail. Our emails were up 542,000. The rejected emails were up as well. The spam was up. Phishing was up. Let's see, spoofing emails were up. But we still had zero emails for malware. Malware is one of the important ones that leads to ransomware. So we're happy about that. Account information, we're still adding more students as they get their learning forms in. So that increases every day. I want to say we have another 1,500 under this number in these last couple of weeks since this report was done. Our storage has increased because more people went back. The suspicious login attempts is also up. Shared files is up. Suspicious login attempts is up, which is not good. Failed user login attempts is also up, and that's just people coming back to break. We had 21 price variance incidents that were blocked from our data loss prevention on Google. For E-rate, we don't have any gates up this time, but we still are still working on the new bits, which would be the data center co-location services as well as an E-rate gate for network switches. Technology tickets for August were 592 tickets created, 658 tickets resolved, 643 tickets remaining. That's pretty much the same today. I believe we have like 650 tickets left. For projects, we're working, cybersecurity, we're working with security vulnerabilities. We're doing monthly scans on our district internal services as well as external stuff through a company called Arctic Wolf that is based in Twin Cities. So we get that report. So we're going to look at addressing those issues. We continue to work with Benson to install new wireless access points following a limited wireless assessment that was done this last spring. And they've been working all summer to do that. So it's moving access points within rooms, within gyms to make the coverage for their buildings. So we have an assessment done for every one of our buildings. So they're doing that. The new stuff is some of the equipment's coming in for the new buildings. The new Cisco infrastructure for the DSC transportation facilities. Some of the equipment's already been received either at Scotty Garfield or actually some other facilities. We have new AD equipment for the new school warden room space. So some of that stuff has been received. And we did receive some of the new Panasonic security video equipment for the two-minute schools. The two-minute schools are getting upgraded. Video security systems, which involves the high schools. So, just any questions?
I thought about you the other day because of Los Angeles, their unified school district had a pretty significant cyber attack.
Yes, yes. New malware there.
Did it? And I think it shut the school down.
It did.
So students, yeah, it was significant.
518,000 students turned down for a day and a half.
Something like that. And they're not sure what data they've lost either, I don't worry, are they?
Not that I would worry. They probably won't want to release that yet.
I appreciate you doing that.
Yeah, so thank you, Bart. Appreciate it.
I have a question. I just have two questions. One is, what kind of technology is going to be in the school warden room and building? How technologically advanced are we going to be? And like, are we going to have RSD microphones or not?
No, they'll be all the microphones. And we'll have five displays, two, three on the inside, and then one projector display behind, like we had with the screen. And I believe there's going to be two displays outside the entry. So if there's a workflow, it'll be in there. And those are 86-inch displays. So we'll have a lot of visibility. The equipment is supposed to be able to record and strain these meetings. Microphones are all portable microphones, kind of like we had when we had these meetings, when we have the tables down as opposed to the ones permitted on the system. So hopefully, it'll all be new. Well, it will all be new equipment as opposed to the 10 or 12-year-old equipment we had on our house.
And my other question is, how does the new video security equipment compare to what already exists at the middle school?
The stuff put in the middle schools is roughly 10 years old. So it's kind of like your 10-year-old phone. So the cameras will be put in at the middle school. The outside cameras are 4K capability. So that's a huge improvement. It'll be, it'll be the same equipment we have at the high schools, which is much better.
Other questions? Great, let's move on to the transportation report. 32 trips in August, 51 scheduled so far for September. There have been some barriers to getting new bus drivers trained that have to do with the new mandates on ELDT training. It appears that our buses, our new buses that we ordered, hopefully, we'll see them in March of 2023. And then attached to the documents on Board Look, you can see the 2022-2023 transportation pricing proposal. And essentially, it looks like from 2021 to 2022 to this academic year, we're seeing an increase of about 8.2% on everything. Is that pretty standard?
Yes, I spoke with Steve Johnson, and he said the Consumer Price Index averages 8.5. So he said this fell just underneath it. So he was comfortable with this increase.
Okay. Questions? Great. Now we can move on to our recommended resolutions that we will be bringing these forth to the full board meeting, what, next week? Is that right? We have a resolution for our maximum levy certification. We also have the acceptance of donations to the Deloitte Public Schools. And then lastly, we have acceptance of grants to the Deloitte Public Schools. And we can talk about those in more detail when we have the full board meeting next week. Are there any questions about those three resolutions right now?
I just want to make sure that, you know, you're asking for the max levy certification. Do you anticipate using the max when it comes down to the levy?
At this point, I would say yes. We have preliminary numbers next week when I print that out or signatures that need. It's just standard procedure to ask for the maximum. Of course, we have months to see if that would change. But it's good practice to ask for the maximum.
Right, and so I just know that in prior years, we get excited if we don't actually have to approve the max when it comes down to the actual number, it's not the running certain pages.
And if the maximum is in our favor, then that's good too.
I understand. I'm excited when it comes to low expectations.
I appreciate that.
Even if it's.
That's right. That's correct. Thank you.
So other information we'll have on the consent agenda. Excuse me, we have the HR staffing report. And then I think this is kind of important news is under our finances on the consent agenda, we will have the hourly substitute pay rate minimum wage increases for FY '23. And what you can essentially see if you look through this is we're going from around $10 to essentially around 13 and 1/2.
Yes, so the previous rates were minimum wage and a few were minimum wage plus 15 cents. We're just not seeing that that is getting us many hourly employees. And quite frankly, it's, even though it's the minimum, it's quite low for us to be anywhere nearly competitive with any other market. So roughly, we moved them up $3, rounded up a little bit for each of the positions that were at that low threshold. There's a few things just to note. You'll see the, under the food service, we do have the substitute non-unit helper at $13, and that's partially, well, mostly because of our actual contracted rate for our employees is just over that. And we didn't want to have our hourly pay anything greater than our current staff. So that's why that one is a little bit lower for those few things. And you'll see the same with our, in our maintenance. That's for the same reason. The other thing that is not reflected on here and actually just came to us this week with the report from Teachers on Call is we would like to amend this and allow for our paraprofessional hourly to be paid, or I'm sorry, the substitute paraprofessionals to be paid at $15 an hour rather than the 13.50 that they're currently at.
And then you said to $15?
Yes.
So here where we have the, oh, okay.
Yes, so we'd like to.
So the whole new rate, okay.
I mean, so we'd like to do that for our hourly on this report as well as our substitute amounts for our paraprofessionals. And that still is below the threshold of our entry-level paraprofessionals who are contracted employees.
What is that, just to remember?
I believe it's, the entry for the first zero to six months is 16.37. So it's a bit higher.
It's a bit higher. Other questions?
I have a question under miscellaneous category on the third page. Are those regular positions we're talking about? Or are those substitutes for those positions? Such as, you know, playground monitor and parent involvement coordinator and that.
So those are just our regular hourly positions? So this rate, this has both on the rate sheet then?
That's not probably marked or understood under the title of the whole sheet.
Got it, I get that.
And, you know, I have to say that, you know, for the seven years I've been on the board, just around every year, I have begged for to approve wage increases for all of, for the sheet over and over and over again. And we've never gotten, been able to get it passed in agreement. And now, because of the times, I certainly hope we'll support this because it's way more than I ever tried to negotiate. And it's fully needed. But, you know, if we would have done that, we might not be in the position we are. And so, you know, I just wanted to say that I tried. And I'm glad that Radafree can actually happen now.
And I would say too that the impact of this change, if we, presuming that it's going to have a positive impact that we believe it will on filling those positions, it also creates a more thriving work environment for our current employees because you won't have people stressed out trying to do, fulfill 10 different jobs at the same time and/or cost effectiveness of having enough lunchroom supervisors, playground supervisors, so that you don't have principal always in the lunchroom three hours a day for lunch. That's just not sound financial impact. So I think that it's going to have morale impact and systems impact and just fill rate impact.
And I have a follow-up question actually. In that the main argument every other year has been about wage compression with other staff people. Do you anticipate that being a problem within the bargaining year instead of already self-look like?
I would imagine that it would be part of their next contract discussion. But we also have to remember that contracted employees get other things that hourly employees do not. And so I'm sure it will be part of the conversation.
That was always the argument used against raising our wages. So I just hope you're aware of those as conversation.
And again, one of the reasons that a couple of those are the rate they are is so that it isn't competing directly with our contracted staff.
I hope you support this.
We did some work when you first came up about banning and grading to make sure you could look at the way people were stacked and put, so that.
Yes.
A lot of work on that, right?
Still in process, yes.
Other questions? Great, so let's move on now to the game worker rates for FY '23.
So the activities department has requested a $5 rate increase across the board for all of their game worker rates. I don't recall the last time this has been brought forward.
It's been years since the two ADs sent me this request. It's been several years. And I did some quick math too, and it's much needed, again, like some of our other hourly rates. And it costs roughly $2,400 for each site to do this increase for the two sites. So it's. So it's, I think it's affordable and it's something we need to do.
Was there a reason that there's some of them that didn't change? Was it, they, those were okay in terms of we didn't have problems filling those positions? Or they seem to be competitive?
Yeah, I'm assuming they're competitive or adequate for what the, what the work is.
Got it.
Another question. Does this include referees at all? I, I don't see them on here necessarily, or recovered and other things, or it's just the other workers?
This is, this is all that was sent to us.
Yeah, I think so. I'm not positive, but I think the referees are actually paid through the athletic teams that are playing. I think that's to a separate fund.
But they're not providing a, a rate?
This is what we got from the ADs.
And my follow-up question to that is, is we're talking about raising wages here for a lot of people in our district. Are we going to be able to afford that long-term within our budget overall? Or, you know, obviously, we're going to have to decide what's worth and what's not to make some cutback?
That's a great question. But most of these fees are supported by the individual sports and the, the fees that they get. So it's coded, it comes out of these codes. So they're supporting it on their own, these are not district fees at this point. So they generate the money and they sell their tickets. And then they hire a ticket taker and then we come out of that budget code for that sport.
Has that budget code, I mean, sport ever gone negative?
Well, no, because we just went from the student activity accounts to the general fund.
Okay.
So that will be the process now. We'll have to look at it at the end of the year, but it's a good question.
So along with that, just to ask a question further for as much of the public as everybody too. The increase in hourly rates and the substitute rates too would be, that would be more out of our general accounts. And, and some, sometimes there are unforeseen additional expenses. Like if we can't get a substitute teacher, for example, quite often we have somebody working on a one-sixth overload, which actually costs more than having a substitute teacher. So that, that's part of the, the offset. But just in general, with those substitute and hourly changes, we believe that this is sustainable for the district. Can we afford, can we afford to have these salary increases?
So are we just talking this sheet, are we talking?
This sheet.
This sheet. So yes, this.
The hourly.
Yes, so I, when I did my quick math, my rough math, it, it, I did it by season and it came to roughly twenty-four hundred dollars for each site.
For the game worker rates.
For all these game worker rates, correct.
But for the hourly and substitute pay rates.
So are, are we, are we talking about your hourly?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's a good question. Three dollars makes a big difference. So I'd have to pull a report and, and I can do that and see what we did spend on, on substitutes last year in the general fund. And then we'd have to do the math, but I can certainly do that now. We didn't have a lot of subs the last two, or back in twenty twenty-one. But last year we did and we struggled to find them, so the number is still somewhat skewed. I go back to probably eighteen, twenty. But I think at every, any point, districts do have to kind of level the playing field with their, with our rates because we do need to be competitive. I'm very familiar with T O C and I think it's a wonderful, wonderful resource for us. But these people can also choose to go to a different district, so we have to be competitive. And, you know, we'll have to take a look at it, I mean, the bite could be, it could be significant. But we have to discuss where we're going to take that out of.
And I, and I also think to John's comment, what we saw last year when we really struggled to fill substitutes was teachers and principals giving up their prep time.
Yep.
So there's an overload of potential costs, as he said, but there's also kind of a, a mental cost to our staff as well to, to not have breaks and not have what they're really should be having. So, yes, I think fiscally responsibly, we can take a look at that just to see. But there's some things that I would say are non-monetary that we can't necessarily put a price on that are value add to our employees and the ability for them to keep saying during the school year. So I think there's a, a balance there that we'll have to.
Well, it's a balance when you think about stewardship because we have resources that are monetary in value and then we have people that are, that use as a huge significant resource. So we cannot deplete the people at the cost of the financials. So we have to come to that balance when we think about stewardship and being responsible to the task.
Well said. And as, as superintendent in balancing those, those two competing interests, I, I believe that just for systemic sustainability and the benefit of everybody, this is the, the best choice. And I think based on our recommendation from our executive director of Business Services and Finance and Executive Director of Human Resources and Operations.
I gotta get you guys cool thinking. Okay. Other questions? All right, okay, so now we move on. Our financial reports will begin later as we are finishing up our audit.
Correct.
So we will worry about those in October, maybe even October, maybe probably November meeting?
In our October meeting, I'll start presenting our FY twenty-three monthly budget summary. And I still won't really be able to present our FY twenty-two because they'll be, they're still auditing our final numbers. But I can start presenting our FY twenty-three numbers in our, at our October meeting.
Perfect. All right, so moving on, we have no fundraisers. So now we move on to bids, RFP and quotes, we have none this month. So now we're on to D, contracts, change order leases. And the first thing we have is a Cook County tuition agreement with IST seven oh nine for math services and FY twenty-three for intermediate algebra, algebra two and algebra two concepts.
So we received a request from Cook County. They really did not have any math teachers, so they reached out to us and we have this agreement with them now and we're potentially thinking it's forty-seven to fifty-three students. But we'll see, I mean, you know, you have the big plan and then sometimes we don't get all those numbers. But we're, we're trying to be good neighbors and we want all children to be educated. So we were willing to do this agreement with them.
Great, and then how does the, how does the money split with that? Do we get a portion of that allocation from the state because we're taking on?
We really don't, we really will just get money from Cook County.
Cook County?
It'll be a strict tuition agreement.
Okay.
And I do believe they're working with Cattery on, on looking at, you know, how A D Ms and whatnot. But for the most part, it will be a two, a third party tuition, tuition agreement.
And then the other question I had about this, so forty-seven to fifty-three students. If this is going through, we said A E O, what does that load look like for those teachers? Does that have an impact on load?
We were assured that we would not have to add any more teachers, that the teachers had time in their day to add the students.
That's correct.
We would, we will hope that's what happens.
Because that's a great question because that's one of the things, as the request came from Cook County, we wanted to be assured that this would add additional financial burden to the district and that it would pay for itself and through calculations and working with the principal, we're told that staff had the capacity to absorb these students and this was a way to also build the program and that it wouldn't cause the district additional resources.
Oh yeah, so we have a cost of enrollment at six oh five per semester, per student, per course.
That's correct, and that is in alignment on any, we have two other third-party agreements with Fermantown and we round it to be the same.
Okay.
So it is in alignment to those charges as well.
Perfect, that's great. And I'm sure Cook County appreciates it, math teachers aren't easy to find.
Yes.
Okay, and then we have the St. Louis County, let me just figure out my name here. Now we have the St. Louis County Check and Connect Mentor Contract for FY twenty-three. This is the huge grant that St. Louis County got, correct, that we discussed? We talked earlier in some of the collum meetings and stuff about this check.
That's right.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. So this looks like, is this a one-point?
So this, this is a, an agreement we've already have in place, a grant with St. Louis County. This is an amendment to add an additional FTE for P D thousand, so we're, well, to St. Louis County for this.
And this one, this FTE is going to be full-time supporting the Check and Connect Program?
Correct.
At Wolf East in Dunville?
No, this is, this is the Check and Connect Mentor that would be supporting A O C.
There, that's what I, okay, sorry about, so we have fourteen Check and Connect mentors at four sites, Dunville, Duluth, Forte, and Lincoln Park. Now we're adding the additional mentor at the Area Learning Center.
That's correct.
That's great. Because we have a now Check and Connect at the Area Learning Center previous to this happening.
No, we haven't.
This is going to be huge, are they looking forward to having a Check and?
Oh, they're definitely looking forward and, and we were excited that St. Louis County had the additional funds. So we're able to fund the position and decided to offer it to our Area Learning Center.
That's great. And Roswell?
I'm just trying to understand the math here. With the, they, if we're having fifteen mentors, but yet St. Louis County is only reimbursing us seven hundred and eight thousand dollars this year, does that leave a balance of a million dollars coming out of our budget?
Nope, it's a free-year grant, so it's spread out, out. So we pay and then we send them an invoice and they reimburse us.
But it says that the, for the total, there is one point seven million for all twenty-sixth of school year.
Correct.
But like for, for this school year, it's seven hundred and eight thousand, does that include everything for all fifteen?
Yes.
And then why was last year's only two hundred and ninety-eight thousand?
They, because it started in January, I think there was a start date that was halfway through the year.
And are we still requiring them all to be licensed mental health practitioners?
Yes.
I believe so.
And we, have we been able to fill and maintain those relationships?
Yeah, we've been able to hire all of the new physicians. Success.
Okay, so now we're moving on to miscellaneous informational items, no action required. First thing, we'll have our district property update.
That document is contained within the board package and I can answer questions, I probably don't need to read the word part, things are looking really good.
Perfect. Questions, the photographs are great.
They are, they're. Pardon me, sorry, I was stopping, I wasn't, but I was saying, I had one thing. Men of the Board has expressed interest in some tours and I know we talked preliminarily about it, but then with the start of the school year, we had it busy. Maybe if you could shoot a couple of dates and share with the board for, for potential visits to the site and those of interest.
Or we could go at it the other way, the board can pick some dates, like try and make those work, that might be easier.
Have you met us?
Maybe I should fix the dates.
Yeah, I think that would, that's more, that's very helpful.
Would the board?
Unless you want to wait till it's done.
Do you feel the board would prefer towards the end of the week or earlier in the week, midday, end of day?
One of you? Yeah. Probably two dates with a couple, just because then some that can make it, some that can't.
Kind of midday and then end of day or something?
That'd be perfect.
Okay, I'll pick, I'll talk to Jason and Ethan and pick some dates.
Great, that's helpful. All right, so we have the.
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
So are we not having any basement storage in our new building? Because I don't see any basements in these pictures, so I'm just making sure.
No, there is no basement storage and part of the good thing about moving to U H G was people had to pare things down and clean. We're not even completed all that task, but we'll, we'll get there.
All right, so, so all the schools can't look forward to sending more stuff?
No.
Making that clear.
There'd be need to clean from now on.
From now on, all right, I appreciate that. Then we have an update from Greg Fulmer and Simone and I have talked, we're going to update Kathy's information on there and put her information on there for the next one. There's information about eight hundred East Central Entrance, back on the market, all marketing in place and active. And this is as of October first, twenty twenty-two, so we've tripped forward in time a little bit, right? It's not October.
Must be an error in the.
Must be an error in the date, yeah, okay. All right, so now we look at our expenditure contracts. And the first time that I finally noticed D R, D U, G and S A F, the first time I was like, oh, this is new. No, it's not. Can look through those. We also have all of the agreements for piano tuning, which is important because we want our students to have tuned piano. Renting parking spaces for our east and a whole bunch of other contracts that we have in here. If you move to page one twenty-three in our booklet, we move on to our no-cost contracts.
I, I just have a.
Oh yeah, sorry, Alana.
Perhaps we can reword the logical explanation in that because I fear that the public may read that in not nice terms, that, that it's the service used by, right? N D S, for data services, we, yeah, so perhaps.
Business, oh, for business services, that's, I noticed that too, Alana, you're right.
I'm just saying, we don't want to make that we use D S.
Yeah, that's probably, oh, I totally have it start. Yeah, we might want to clean some, clarify that language a little bit. Perfect.
Okay, right.
Thank you. Moving on to one twenty-three, we look at our no-cost contract sign, we have some with Lake Superior Swim Club. Children's Dental Services, they come to Piedmont, they're fantastic. University of Minnesota, Mint Skew System, yes, Duluth, Minnesota Humanities, H T C and the Boosters are all no-cost contracts. And then moving on to one sixty, we have our revenue contracts. And that's Harbor City International for twenty-five thousand to provide vending meals to Harbor City students for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year.
Are those, are those lunches included in our lunch counts that we got earlier, the thirty-three thousand?
That is a great question.
It's a good question.
I'm going to find out. Yeah, I'll write that down for you.
And are there other places that we make lunch for besides Harbor City? Under contract?
This is the only contract we've received, so.
I didn't know if, if like, America, we, we don't close any of those residential, so that kind of stuff.
I was just going to look in that nutrition report, were they listed?
I don't remember the name, but I didn't remember either.
That's a good question. All right, and then lastly, we have our grant application. Jen Charles from E C F E for the Northland Foundation for S E L Mentorship to our local childcare providers. And that is what we have on the agenda this week for HR Business Services, are there questions?
Yes, do we feel that with needing less than an hour, we got our hands on it? I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
I'm going to do my second career as an auctioneer.
Start my dance.
You practice early.
I need it.
We do have time for you to put on a show.
I'll bet you have your luck down that, loose deal wasn't out from.
Oh, right.
So the hourly rate sheet, I will be adjusting that para for the regular board meeting.
Perfect.
So hopefully it'll be a different attachment.
Okay. I won't remember that. Are there other questions? Are there other questions? Good, all right, great job, everybody, thank you. Have a great week.
Thank you.
Thank you.